Welcome to this virtual debate for Edmunds City Council Position Two presented by MyEdmonds News. My name is Teresa Whipple and I'll be moderating this debate and Janice Carr will serve as our timekeeper. Janice, thank you very much. And thanks to our sponsors Edmunds College, James Russell, P L L C, Certified Public Accountants, and Business Advisors in Office Tech. The questions were compiled today based on suggestions of civic groups, including the Alliance for Citizens, sorry, the Alliance of Citizens for Edmunds and the Edmunds Civic Roundtable, plus numerous individuals who sent in their own questions. I also want to thank each of our candidates for participating today. Janelle Cass and Will Chen, thank you so much for being here. I know how busy your schedules are, really appreciate you taking the time. Before we get started, I wanted to go over the ground rules. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement. Then I'll ask a series of questions and they will each get two minutes to respond. After each question, candidates will be allowed one minute to rebut their opponent or to add a follow-up response. And they will indicate their desire to do so by raising their real hand rather than their virtual hand. So I make sure to see it. And again, we only have one additional comment or rebut after each question. So we don't spend more time than we're already spending here with this very worthwhile cause. After all of the questions, then each candidate will have an opportunity to make a one-minute closing statement. Now, we have, Janice is our timekeeper and she'll demonstrate what that's going to look like. So you know what to look for. She will notify you by holding up a warning for one minute and then 30 seconds and then stop. Thank you very much for that. Since we are in person to have a real coin toss to see who starts first, we'll go in alphabetical order. And that means that Janelle will start first and then Will will be able to give the closing statement first. So let's move on to opening statements and Ms. Cass, you get to go first.
Thank you to MyEdmonds News and thank you to all the people who've tuned in to hear how we stand on the issues. My name is Janelle Cass. I'm a mother, wife, local business owner, graduate of the U.S. Air Force Academy with a degree in civil environmental engineering and a veteran. And like you, loves Edmunds and wants to keep its charm. I'm running for city council because our government has been in turmoil for the last two years. Together, we've witnessed block voting, disregard for some council members' opinions, and the people being left out of decision-making. Because each city council member has been voted in by the people to represent them, my top priority will be to advocate that all council member voices be heard and be a welcome part of the process. My professional career has demonstrated the skills of bringing multiple diverse organizations and residents together. And as a federal aviation administration, environmental lead on complex projects, I unified FAA management, unions, major U.S. airlines, the National Parks Department, tribal nation leaders, state historic preservation offices, among others. The results were positive outcomes for all involved, including the environment. I intend to bring these skills of diplomacy and the ability to foster strong working relationships to the city council to create efficiency, civility, and constructive results for the people of Edmunds. I will serve the residents of Edmunds with the core values ingrained in me during my Air Force time: integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all we do. As your city council member, I will work to fulfill my campaign message to restore transparency in our government, protect single-family residential housing and the environment, and to invest in our police, firefighters, and small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Teresa, and MyEdmonds News and all the sponsors for putting up this forum. To the residents who tuned in to listen, thank you for being a responsible voter. My name is Will Chen. I'm running for Edmunds City Council Position Number Two. Like you, I love Edmunds, the place where I find my American dreams. When I first arrived in America, my friend took me straight from the airport to the kitchen of a restaurant and hang me in the apron and say, "Welcome to America." I started working and never stopped ever since. I'm blessed to be a resident, a father, a husband, a business owner, and a certified public accountant who has helped many small businesses succeed. As a first-generation American, I will bring a more diverse perspective to the council. More importantly, I'm a good listener. I make decisions based on residents and business owners' input and considerations of all stakeholders concerned. In addition, I'm a team builder that will work with all council members, even the ones who might disagree with me and the members of our entire communities to find practical solutions rather than being drawn into the partisan divide. This is who I am. And that's why I'm the best candidate for this position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our first question and Mr. Chen, you will have this one first. There has been a lack of civility and decorum displayed by elected officials at Edmunds City Council meetings. What will you do as a council member to restore decorum and collaboration on the council?
Thank you, Teresa. Yes, I have witnessed how our council functions and it's evidenced by the partisan divide. When I'm elected to the council, I will focus on the issues at hand instead of focusing on the individuals. As a council member, we need to have all the residents and the business owners' interest in my and not voting and base our decisions based on the party-line divisions. I have a long history and evidence that I can walk across the line. I will reach across from party line to every individual and base on the issues at hand that will improve our safety, our community. Seniors emphasize and invest in our police, our fire, and our force responders. And make sure that they have the adequate funding that they need to do their jobs to protect our beloved community. And also, we need to ensure that our council as a municipal government, we get to go back to the basic. We get to focus on making sure our role and our streets are well-maintained, our capital buildings adequately maintained, and then take care of our seniors. We have about 20% of our populations who are seniors. That means we need to make policies and ensure that our basic infrastructures are maintained. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cass, and for either of you, if you ever want me to repeat the question, please let me know. Ms. Cass, it's your turn.
Thanks, Teresa. Well, I wholeheartedly agree that the lack of civility on city council is a really big issue. And in fact, I'm the one who brought to the public eye of one of our city council members' blatant disregard for the code of conduct. So I would be in support of giving some amount of accountability when somebody breaches the code of conduct because we deserve more as citizens. And one of the things that I would recommend, and I do have a very proven track record of bringing people together with diverse opinions and coming up with good solutions. But one of the first things we probably need to do is hire a parliamentarian so that we are sticking to the rules and the processes of the meetings. And then that will make sure that we're following good decorum. And that'll actually improve the efficiency of the meetings, I think, as well. And one of the things, too, that I would be absolutely in favor of because I'm very concerned that in the last two years, we have three city council members that have not been able to get anything on the agenda. This is really disconcerting because those people were elected to represent the people of Edmunds. And so if they can't get their ideas and their concerns on the agenda, that means that the people's ideas and concerns are not making it to having open and honest dialogue. So I would be a big advocate that the agenda items need to be all-inclusive from all city council members. And furthermore, I think we need to just make sure that we are enforcing the code of conduct and have expectations. And I plan on just setting that example of being a team builder and listening to each of the team members on the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen, response?
Yes, I have a question, a rebut for Janelle Cass. She has been stretching that she will work with all members, but during the course of the campaign, time and time again, she has demonstrated the behavior of attacking individuals rather than based on issue and is evidenced in public records on the meeting. So my question is, how do you demonstrate this kind of behavior? And how can you work with other members on the council when you get elected?
Yeah, thank you, Will, for the question. You know, each time I've come to city council and I've made public comments, I might add more so than you have. They have been concerns that people have brought to me and I've echoed those concerns. And you can't confuse being unafraid to bring up issues and have an honest dialogue with being controversial. So pointing out the hate portal, which was not something that was ever gone through a public process, is not controversial. There's a lot of people, a lot of our fellow residents, share that same concern. And so that's actually representing the people.
Thank you. Ms. Cass, did you have a question or response? A follow-up, I guess?
Um, yeah, I guess I would ask, Will, like, how many times you've made comments at city council over the last year?
Mr. Chen?
I publicly made one comment on the council meeting. And that's a council meeting, a comment that's regarding to public safety. And I see a need and I provided a constructive recommendation because I did my study, I did my research, I talked to the experts that our community at this point in time would be beneficial to have a citizens' patrol program to ensure that our neighborful watch programs are reactivated. Our volunteers can be trained and become a patrol to protect their own home and our own community. I make the recommendations. I'm very pleased that this budgeting line has been reflected on our 2022 proposed budget. So I'm very pleased that our city is taking our recommendation, my recommendation.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next question and this will go to Ms. Cass first. People have been polarized at both the local and national level into factions that reflect their beliefs. As a city council member, describe your specific approach to pulling your constituents together to listen to each other, try to reach consensus around tough issues, and move forward in an intelligent policymaking process?
Thank you. I totally agree about the polarization. And what I've noticed is that, as I'm doorbelling, and what's beautiful about local politics is that it doesn't matter what party you align with when it comes to local things like sidewalks and traffic concerns. 90% of the people agreed to 90% of the things. And what we need to do is just put focus on those things that we can come together and agree on and go for those small wins. And that's something that I did on very complex projects before that had a lot of controversy regarding noise and the environment. And it's just really important to bring all the data, stay focused on the information, and not be reactive about opinions, but be open and listen. And I'd like to bring that to our Edmunds City Council. And really just start with the wins, start with the sidewalks, start with doing something that we can all agree to, like definitely public safety. We want to, we all agree, we want more improved public safety. So we'll focus on things like that. And once we get those wins and we get the trust back, I think you're going to see people becoming more unified and cohesive.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
People have been polarized at both the local and national level into factions that reflect their beliefs. As a city council member, describe your specific approach to pulling your constituents together to listen to each other, try to reach consensus around tough issues, and move forward in an intelligent policymaking process?
Thank you, Teresa. Yes, our political environment is in fact polarized at the national level and at the local level as well. I think my approach is we have to bring people to the table to have a conversation. And as a municipal government, we need to focus on issues, local issues, that impact the quality of our lives, like public safety. Just today, this morning, I was out doorbelling. I had had a conversation with one of the homeowners who have problems with sewage, drinkage issue. That I took some pictures and have a good conversation with them. Just this, the fact that, just take a step back, listen, listen to the people who we represented it and bring all council members, residents, to the table and discuss the costs and the benefits. I mean, not everybody is 100% agreeing on every issue, but we have to look at the costs and benefits. If a project is a win-win, definitely we'll do it. If a project will benefit some, will cause some problems in other aspects, we'll bring people to the table and analyze, look at the costs and benefits analysis. And if it benefit the majority, then we'll move forward with it. I think we need to come back to the basic and focus, listen, that's the key, just listen.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cass, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, not at this time, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Chen, anything more?
I'm good.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question and we'll start with you on this one, Mr. Chen. There is a belief that some council members in Edmunds align themselves with political parties, even though the city's elected positions are nonpartisan, and that council members are listening to outside interests rather than their own constituents. Do you align your views with a political party? And if so, what do you say to those who believe it hurts your ability to represent all residents in your decision-making?
Yes, I position myself as a moderate Democrat. This is a nonpartisan position. I'm running to represent all of Edmunds. Our local government should be reflective, represent the people who live here and work here. And that's what I intend to do. I will listen along on the people in the ball, but also the people outside of the ball. I have plenty of experience working with peoples with diverse backgrounds and bring those people to the table. I own and run a certified public accountant CPA firm right here in Edmunds, close to Highway 99. And I have many clients with many diverse backgrounds. I was able to communicate with them, listen to what their needs. And during the course of my campaign, I have talked to thousands of residents and I understand their issue, their needs. And many of them are tired of the political divisions and want us to be focusing on issues rather than partisan attack. I think I have demonstrated time and time again that I have the ability to work with people from the left and the right and everybody in between. I want to bring this kind of representations to the council.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cass?
Yeah, thank you. I agree that there has been partisan and special interest influences on our local government as of late. And I think it has no, partisan politics has no place in local politics. Sidewalks don't really care if you're red or blue. And quite frankly, I really don't care either. I am focused on Edmunds and Edmunds is the only special interest I will serve. Unlike my opponent, I purposely did not go out and seek endorsements from partisan or special interest groups. And so that way, you know where my loyalties lie. And this is so much so and recognized by our fellow residents that the vast majority of my funding comes from here in Edmunds. Unlike my opponent, who has over 66% of his money coming from outside of Edmunds, and that's including even some donors coming from outside of the state. So when residents vote for me, they're going to know that I am dedicated to representing them and their interests alone. And I'm here to represent all of Edmunds. I have supporters from all over and I've talked during doorbelling to residents all over. And we all have very common concerns and very basic fundamental concerns about what the government here in Edmunds should be doing. So, yeah, I think we need to return to hardcore, nonpartisan, Edmunds-focused leadership.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen, a response?
Yes, thank you. Janelle and Teresa and everybody who is listening. I'm very proud that people who I have worked with, I have served in different capacities during the course of my professional life, my service on various nonprofit organizations such as the Chinese Chamber of Commerce, the family associations, and other places where people have trusted in me. And they trust me with the ability to represent the community that I work in living. And I can't help that I have more friends than you do, Janelle. I have friends within Edmunds. I have many supporters, many donors in Edmunds. And I also have many people who trusted in me, who in many cases, can't afford to live in Edmunds. And I can't, I can't help that I have more friends than you do.
Ms. Cass, did you have a response?
I absolutely do. Yeah, my professional career has taken me all over the United States and in many of the territories of the United States to do work. And I have a lot of supporters nationally. But I'm focused on Edmunds and I'm more proud of the recent acquaintances and support that I have gained here in Edmunds in just this short campaign since last year. And I don't think this is a matter of who has more or less friends. This is about the politics and passing policies and being focused on Edmunds and only influenced by Edmunds. And again, the question started off about partisan, partisanship. And my opponent has made sure that he gets endorsements from partisans and special interests. And that has been what's been troublesome with our politics as of late. So let's focus just on Edmunds. E for Edmunds.
Thank you. We are really going to only take one per question, Will, but maybe you can add your responses into your next, when we move further along, okay?
Assuming a false statement, though.
Okay, well, let's see if we can catch up on that in the next one, okay? We're trying to keep it moving along. Thank you. Next follow-up. This one will go to Ms. Cass first. What is your approach to collecting input from residents and incorporating it into your decision-making? Can you provide an example of where your initial inclination on a decision was changed by constituents' feedback? And we'll start with Ms. Cass.
Thank you. So I have really broad experience seeking input from citizens on major projects. And that starts with setting up, I've set up workshops, going to where residents are most affected to get their input, taking it both in writing and verbally as well as emails, and then pulling that together to balance that with scientific data and information. And then making sure that that information is always available either via social media or the press. And, you know, I would say, having open and honest discussions about different issues. I'm trying to think of something that maybe more recently, you know, I've become very aware of the people on Ninth Avenue in Bedoin. They're very concerned about the bike lanes coming in. I am a cyclist, I really love biking. And I had a niece who actually was recently, had a big injury on her bike. So safety is really important. And so when I heard how the residents were really against having those bike lanes, it did kind of highlight to me that we really need to listen to the people and make sure that we're not making decisions just because we're getting money from an outside entity. We need to be listening to our residents.
Thank you. Mr. Chen?
Thank you, Teresa. I think the key of public engagement is by humbling yourself. Don't go into any issue with a predetermined outcome in mind. Just going as a blank piece of paper. Humble yourself, listen to people's concern and inputs. And most importantly, be there, be there to investigate, collect data, to see the situations firsthand before you make a decision. Just like this morning, I was doorbelling. I was on Ninety-Second Avenue, Ninety-Second Place, right on, close to 220. Came to this homeowner. His house was kind of down Uh, his house was kind of uh down slope a little bit, but the street is higher than the house. Uh, so there's a drinkies right there uh that when when the flat water come, uh, the drinkies couldn't handle the volume, so the flat kind of fly into into his house. So I was there talking to them, I take pictures. I actually use my hand to uh rub the the surface of the drinkies to see if there's blockage or anything. Uh, so I I did my work. Um, I take, I listen, I take evidence, and I'm gonna bring those inputs with me uh into my decision-making. So those those are the kind of hands-on practice uh that I have been doing all my life. And I will be taking this approach to incorporate all the inputs that from coming from residents, coming from business owners, including those people who historically are underrepresented. I will do that when I'm on the council.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cass, did you have anything to add?
No, I think I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Chen, was there anything more you wanted to say?
Can I take this opportunity to re- respond to the prior questions?
Certainly, go ahead.
Yeah, my opponent uh said that I have been endorsed by political party. That's a false statement. I am not endorsed by any political party.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I comment to that, though?
Uh, so I'm gonna, I I wanna make sure we understand how this is gonna go because we're trying to keep it to one response for each, right?
Understand, okay.
If if we can kind of maybe fold it into other things as we move along, that might be helpful if 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 it works. Otherwise, I I'm just fearful that if we keep this up, we will be here till, well, a while. So let's move on to the next thing. Next question, and this will go to Mr. Chen first. As a legislative body, the city council is supposed to provide a needed check and balance for the executive branch mayor and his or her administration. How would you work with your fellow council members to create a strong legislative vision and implement it? Mr. Chen?
Yeah, this is the beauty of our government, from national to local government, is we have this check and balance. And when I'm on the council, I'll be working with the rest of the council members to be a checking balance for our mayor. Uh, our mayor is a branch of implementing decisions uh that was make uh whether it's an ordinance um or it's a budget that was passed by the council and the mayor just carry out. And it's it's important to to have uh the council members to have inputs into this process. And instead of uh focusing on party line divisions, try to push uh agendas through, we need to keep our residents in mind uh and and actually focus on issues where uh matters the most to our own citizens, to our business community, uh such as uh focusing on on ensuring that our police. Uh, right now, our police force are about ten people down, uh seventeen people short uh uh for for the things that that we we want our police to perform. So we need to focus on uh hiring a more diverse of of uh police officers to ensure that our uh our public safety uh and the police officers can have the tools and the resources that they need to to protect uh our lives. And this is the kind of check and balance that I will uh ensure that reach across the aisle and bring everybody to the table to provide this check and balance.
Thank you. Ms. Cass, do you need me to repeat the question?
Sure, that would be helpful.
As a legislative body, the city council is supposed to provide a needed check and balance to the executive branch mayor and his or her administration. How would you work with your fellow council members to create a strong legislative vision and implement it?
Great. Yeah, so it does seem that recent, as of recent, with that block voting of four, the mayor has ended up having just almost like a unilateral decision-making. So I do think it's really important that the city council become stronger in balancing out the decision-making. And and I think that's gonna in part take being organized and having good extended agendas and making sure that we're including agenda items from all the city council members so that there can be open dialogue and that the public can be brought in in with enough um, you know, lead time to be able to come and speak and bring their issues and concerns with the agenda items uh forward. Because when you leave them out of the equation and you um, then the mayor's not hearing from them. And so it's really important to have good agendas that we're all aware of and that there's full, full disclosure. And this is definitely something that we've seen. There's a couple, like Walkable Main Street seemed to be a unilateral decision made by the mayor that deeply affected our retailers, which they just didn't need that added stress after this pandemic. And we saw where even like uh Councilmember Olson was trying to bring that at least forward as an agenda item, and the other council members just shut that down and didn't support one another. So I think it's gonna be important that that even if it's an idea or concept that might not be your own, you bring it forward on the agenda so that we can have the open and honest dialogue. And that's gonna make our legislative body stronger.
Thank you. Mr. Chen, did you have something else? Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, I think um with the check records that uh my opponent Janelle has, um, she has uh constantly attacking uh the one side of the council members who have a different opinion with hers. And my concern is when she get on the council, she will continuously uh keep that kind of attacking mode uh going forward and uh further uh tearing our council apart, uh even even worse than we are right now. And I am a person who who uh I'm humble, I I listen to both sides uh of of the spectrum. I want to focus on issues and not focus on individuals.
Thank you. Ms. Cass, did you have a response?
Absolutely. Um, my participation in city council, there's been no attacking. It has been focused on issues. Um, for example, when the hate portal was was put up on the government website, that wasn't an attack on any individual. That was a concern about how that system was going to run and what are the potential pitfalls. And um, so that was very issue-focused. And my request was that that would be something that becomes discussed by city council, not just allowed to be put up there by by the mayor. And in fact, it didn't even come through the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. So my emphasis was that we have to get back to process the exact thing that we're talking about that was going to help to bring teamwork and um and taking individuals and emotions out of the um equation.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next question, and this one will go to Ms. Cass first. Mr. Chen, if you have something else you want to say, we can fold it into another one, um, I think. Um, the Edmonds Citizen Housing Commission submitted fifteen recommendations for city council action. One of those would permit upzoning in single-family zoned areas of Edmonds, allowing the construction of duplexes, triplexes, and quadruplexes citywide. Do you support this upzoning for areas now designated as single-family residential? Please state your reasoning. Ms. Cass, we'll start with you.
So I absolutely do not support the upzoning in single-family zones. And I am resolved to stand up for the single-family zones here in Edmonds. You know, we are meeting our Growth Management Act densification requirements. In fact, Edmonds is denser, seven times denser than Seattle, Bellevue, and Tacoma. So I find it um ridiculous that we're being pushed to densify the single-family zones. Furthermore, seventy-eight percent of the people who responded to the Housing Commission surveys indicated that they want to maintain the single-family zones. And unlike my opponent, who is on the Housing Commission, he voted to support three different initiatives that would be including adding duplexes, triplexes, and in some cases, zero-lot line, quadplexes in single-family zoning. And this is absolutely what the people don't want. So if he wasn't listening to the people during the Housing Commission representation, how is he gonna be listening to the people going forth on city council? The zero-lot lines, I I need to add, are also a high detrimental risk to our stormwater system. So I'm definitely against that kind of densification and reduction in green spaces here in Edmonds.
Thank you. Mr. Chen?
Thank you, Trisha. I absolutely against upzoning our single-family zoning here in Edmonds. And that has been evidenced by my vote when I'm serving on the Housing Commission. I voted down the very specific policies that will allow duplex to be built on single-family zoning. And my opponents have time and time again making false statements. Uh, we can go back to to view the public records, to view the meetings, to view the voting records. I have time and time again stated my projections of protecting our single-family zoning, and she continuously making false statements. And this is the kind of behavior that is not healthy. That is is totally making up uh false statements to misguide the public. Uh, this is, this is not a good practice. Uh, an honest, an open uh council member, public servant and needs to stay, stick to the facts and not make false statements.
Thank you. Ms. Cass?
Sure. So um, these aren't false statements. This this is evidenced by the videos from the Housing Commission and the votes. And and there are three specific um housing recommendations that do encompass the inclusion of adding adding the duplexes and quadplexes. It's, so when you look at those three individual initiatives, Will initially supported the one where it's carte blanche throughout all of Seattle, all of Edmonds to add those. At the last minute, yes, he did change his vote. But I think that you could probably see that that timing is congruent with his declaration. Um, you know, letting people know that he plans to run for city council. My impression is that he changed his mind because he knew that it would be politically disadvantage, you know, a disadvantage to him to be pro-duplexes and quadplexes in single-family zones.
Mr. Chen?
Yes, that's uh, that's not true. Uh, as a Citizens Housing Commission, we were selected by the sixteen council members based on seven zones. And by the way, this is a great selection process to ensure that uh people, residents from every corner of our city are fairly represented. Uh, even a minority person, I I was selected as a a housing commissioner. That's a good process. But my point is, when we served on the Housing Commission, it was our job to reach out to public, to have open house, uh to do presentations, to intake public uh inputs about what do they want, what do they don't want, uh and make decisions based on the inputs that we gather. And that's exactly what we need to do.
Thank you. All right, here's a related question, and this one will go to Mr. Chen first. Which Housing Commission recommendations do you support and why?
Uh, one uh policy that's coming out of the Housing uh Commission's recommendation that I do support uh is the uh inter-local agreement with Snohomis Housing Authority. Uh, I think that policy would would be one of the solutions that will ensure that our city can have uh affordable housing for those people who work and live here. Unlike my opponents, she's think that only the elite, only the people who can afford uh to live here, belong here. Uh, on the other hand, I want to protect our single-family zoning. At the same time, I want to find solutions that will bring affordable housing for those people who live and work here and serve our community. And that's one of the policy that I support.
Thank you. Ms. Cass?
Yeah, so I, like, like my opponent, I was happy to see that the inter-local agreement with HASCO was signed. I think that's gonna be very important. Um, I also support the recommendation that our multifamily homes should meet an architectural review and have some standards because we're talking about wanting to incorporate the charm of Edmonds everywhere. It's not just in the bowl, but but to our neighborhoods, you know, surrounding Highway ninety-nine, the uptown neighborhoods. I guess the name is yet to be decided. But so I would support that because they deserve to have the same kind of standards um and aesthetics that we have throughout all of Edmonds. And I and I want to say that I'm very excited that even without these housing uh commission recommendations, we're about to see seven hundred new units being built in the places that are already zoned for multifamily. And there's a diverse housing stock that's coming in. So this isn't about preserving housing stock for um the elite. We've seen time and time again that when you add things like the triplexes and the townhomes, those tend to be more expensive than our existing housing stock, that is the modest uh ranch-style homes that is currently available. If we were to allow this upzoning, those would be knocked down, and then they're gonna be replaced by townhomes that we're seeing like in Ballard and Shoreline that are costing eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars. So I am vehemently concerned about keeping housing costs down. And an important thing is making sure that we're protecting those zones for people and families that want to live here and for the people who want to stay here and keeping those costs down.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen, did you have follow-up? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I think um uh this housing is uh definitely a hot topic uh that's on uh a lot of our residents' mind, uh including myself as well. And as a community, I think we we cannot just ignore cover of our eyes and ignore what's happening. Um, the entire physical reasons uh is changing. If you look at Edmonds, go back uh in eighteen ninety, when the city was incorporated, it has one thousand residents, one thousand people, and now today we have forty-two thousand. Uh, things are changing. We have to plan for growth. We have to strategically uh align and and uh plan and and build and and have this growth plan. Otherwise, um, it's irresponsible.
Thank you. Ms. Cass? Thank you. Ms. Cass?
Yeah, I agree. We have to plan for growth. And that's why we've done all of the work with the Growth Management Act and having our plans and why we're coming due to do our comp plan. And so that's when it's going to be super important to have everybody's input to make sure that Edmonds evolves with what we are envisioning. We don't have to be like the rest of the Puget Sound area. We are a gem of the Northwest. We're a charming and unique city in all of Washington. So we need to preserve that. And by all means, that's going to take planning and that's going to take accommodation to densification where we can. But we are ninety-six percent built out, so it'd be irresponsible for us to think that we need to massively densify more than we already are.
Thank you very much. Another sort of housing-related question here, and this will go to Ms. Cass first. Define affordable housing using your definition of affordable and give an example of a successful project in a similar city where it has worked.
So I don't think I can begin to define affordable housing because that's based off of what an individual can afford. And so that's individuals and families looking at their own budgets. I mean, I personally like to have a certain percentage only go for housing. And I know that that is, it's a privilege that I have. So far, I am happy to hear that, you know, we're on, it looks like at the Lutheran Church, the Housing Hope, maybe a multifamily unit that's coming to our city that will provide lower-income housing for people and for families. And in talking to other cities, it sounds like they've done a really nice job. In fact, in some other Snohomish County cities, Housing Hope has provided small houses. And the people who are about to live in them put sweat equity into the house. And so that they have buy-in and they have pride in the home that they're going to live in. And then I know that that organization has done a really nice job of coming up with a percentage of income and helping people learn how to budget and to seek education and being able to afford more housing later on. So I think that's a project that we can look forward to.
Thank you. Mr. Chen, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can define affordable housing for you and for people who are listening. So I think when you or anybody who spend more than thirty percent of their gross income as a family, then they're classified as affordable. So in our city, I mean, Edmonds is generally, it's more affluent community. However, we do have families who are on paycheck to paycheck, who are making below our median income level and do need affordable housings. And me too, I'm very excited that the Edmonds Lutheran Church is going to work with Housing Hope to have these fifty-two units of affordable housing built right here in Edmonds to accommodate those needs. And this is what I'm standing for, is I want to protect our character and our charm, our single-family housing, the small-town feel. But at the same time, this is exactly the kind of partnerships between nonprofit, between our nonprofit, our local agency, and as a municipal government, we need to help find ways to streamline and help Housing Hope to get their permit approved so that these kind of housing can become a place for those who need.
Thank you. Ms. Cass, did you have anything to add?
I guess I just want to say that when you say something like thirty percent of gross, again, that's still individual-based and what an individual's income is. And that's why I'm not defining it and giving the actual numbers. Again, that's individuals and individual families is how it's defined.
Thank you. Mr. Chen, anything more?
I'm good.
Okay, next question, and this will go to Mr. Chen first. How will you ensure the critical needs of those who are homeless in Edmonds be met without enabling Seattle-style issues such as public camping, trash-along streets, and related public safety concerns?
Teresa, this question really touched my nerve. As a child growing up, I experienced homelessness myself at the age of eight. And through my own experience, I know that the street and the park are not the best place, are not the safest place for those people. As a city, as a community, we need leaders who have heart and compassion, are willing to work with all peoples, including our government, our nonprofit, our residents, churches, to come up with solutions to help those people. I'm so glad that our city have a social workers programs now. We have staff that can link those people who are in need to the services that they need, depending on whether it's the domestic violence, or do they need job training, or do they have drug issue? So we need to link those services to the people who are struggling. And I want to make sure that those people who needed it, they know that the city and the street are not the place for them. And there are services and resources that will help them. And one analogy that I have, I told everybody is we want to teach them how to fish, how to cast their nets after we give them a fish so they can stay on their own feet.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cass?
Just, could you go ahead and just repeat the question?
I would always do that. Thank you. How will you ensure the critical needs of those who are homeless in Edmonds be met without enabling Seattle-style issues such as public camping, trash-along streets, and related public safety concerns?
Thank you. So like Will, this is a topic that's very near and dear to my heart. And I think what we have to be well aware of is that a lot of times, not all the times, but sixty-five percent of the people who are struggling with homelessness are also struggling with addiction and mental illness. And so that's a big chunk that we really have to pay attention to. In fact, last week, I hosted a town hall that had about seventy people attending because people are very concerned about this here in Edmonds. We had two representatives from nonprofits who've done a successful job of helping, and they're doing outreach in person, going into encampments, and helping people with drug addiction get help. And they did explain some of the pitfalls and some of the challenges that they're having. And that's in part because if you get somebody who's willing to go to detox, sometimes there's not a bed for them as they're waiting to go to rehab. And so that brings up the question about a voucher system, which Edmond is considering or has been using. And one thing that was very clear from both the nonprofits and the officer from Arlington, who works with an embedded social worker, again, another very successful program, is that these hotel programs have to come with oversight and expectations. We can't have drug use and low-barrier-type situations in these hotels because that puts at risk the vulnerable people who are homeless, who are not addicts. And that can end up victimizing those people. So it's very important to keep those people separate. The other thing that in talking to law enforcement, Edmonds needs to probably have a no-camping order. And so that can actually trigger law enforcement to look for and get people to go towards services that they need.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen, more to add? Go ahead.
Yes, I just want to call to our attention that homelessness is not just those people who are on the street. It's not just those people who have mental problems, who are drug addicts. And we also have students who are couch-surfing because of various issues. And we need to not lose sight of that and also provide the support that's needed.
Thank you. Ms. Cass, anything more?
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree with what Will just said. And I do want to emphasize something that we learned from one of the representatives of Second Chance, which provides over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in student loans, or sorry, student grants and scholarships for homeless and ex-prisoners to get an education so that they can get off the streets. That was really inspiring, and he attributed a lot to the Edmonds College. So kudos to the college for doing everything that they're doing. And I know that they're working to expand housing as well. So I would definitely support that.
Thank you. Next question, and apologies in advance, this is a long one, so I'm happy to repeat it between the two of you. And Ms. Cass, you'll get this one first. The BNSF Railway recently confirmed that starting in 2023, it will be installing a second track next to the existing track that runs along the Edmonds waterfront. This raises a host of questions about the impacts, ferry, bus, and Amtrak traffic, ongoing safety issues related to the Edmonds waterfront access during emergencies, and the environmental effects on the Edmonds Marsh. What should the city council be doing now to plan for this second track? And what specific steps would you take to address these concerns? Ms. Cass?
Thank you. So as somebody who's been incident command-trained for emergency response, this really brings big concerns to me. One thing I should note is that Edmonds is woefully behind in updating its comprehensive emergency response plan. So there's several things that we need to be doing. We need to make sure that that gets updated to make sure that we are in a good position and practice so that if there is any kind of hazardous materials incident or casualty incident on the other side of the tracks, that we know exactly what we're doing. That probably needs to be happening in parallel to relooking at some of the, like, we need to do another hazardous risk assessment now that the conditions have changed. So that would be involving all of our first responders, working with the port, and working with the railway to compare and contrast what are some of the hazards and what are some things that we can do right now. And I know that in the connector projects, there were some things identified, but that whole hazardous risk assessment needs to be updated with these changing conditions. So that's something that we need to start ASAP.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen, do you need me to repeat that?
No, I think I'm good. Yeah, it is something that we need to pay close attention to. We know we have a beautiful waterfront that everybody enjoy, going there sightseeing, dining, and enjoying Port of Edmonds. It is truly an asset to our community and the Edmonds Marsh. I had a chance to participate in some of the restoration projects that was recently done and very happy to see water is flooding again. And we actually need to work with the experts to identify, assess the potential risks that will come our way and be prepared for that. For the, I think for the emergency access, even the waterfront connector projects, everybody against it, and it was not a good project. But however, the risk and the need is there. So as a council member, I'm I'm in for working with the Port of Edmonds and working with the rail check and other experts in the area to assess environmental risk and also emergency access risks and create a plan to mitigate those risks. If we need to come up with another versions of the waterfront connector that provide the needed service to access the waterfront, we'll have to continue to work on coming up with a practical and good solutions that our city will agree on.
Thank you. Ms. Cass, did you have anything to add?
I just might add that this is something too that should be folded in. And I know that we're due for some conversations with our fire department as our needs have, as we've been densifying, the needs have been growing. And South County Fire has some concerns about how many more calls have been coming to the Edmonds area versus when we share the resources with our sister cities. But it may be something to start bringing up those discussions that this adds kind of a complication and whether or not we're going to have to look at coming up with having assets on the other side of the tracks.
Thank you. Mr. Chen, anything more?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, and this one will go to Mr. Chen first. Sort of a long one again. The city council has put great emphasis on protecting critical areas in Edmonds. As a council member, what would you require in administering critical area studies and State Environmental Policy Act requirements governing Edmonds development? Further, how do you propose protecting the integrity of analyzing critical areas given pressure from outside parties such as consultants for developers working to influence city staff?
Yeah, I mean, we do have a critical area such as the Palenville Creek, the Marsh, and other areas around our cities that needs special attention. Because if we don't plan carefully, overdevelopment will result in stormwater overrun and polluting our wetland, which is critical to our environmental and the Simmons populations. So we need to come up with a set of criteria forced. Of course, we have other resources at the county level, at the state level, in our local level. We have, one of the things is Edmonds has tremendous talent in ethnic citizens living here. So we need to tap into our residents, our talents, right here to come up with the solutions to identify those criteria and then adhere to them. Make sure that we're not overdeveloping. And if the special interests have influences, we have to stand up and say no if it's going to be resulting damages to those critical areas in our city as a whole. we have to stand up and say no.
Thank you. Ms. Cass, need me to repeat the question?
No, I think I'm good. Thanks, Teresa. So as an environmental specialist who actually performed environmental impact analysis in accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act and in some cases, the State Environmental Policy Act, I think this is a fundamental process and needs to happen for decision making. In fact, it's a tool for decision making. So as a city council member, my every intention is that for these actions that would impact our critical areas, I would ask to review the CEPA documentation. And I would make sure that we're following the process in accordance with the law. So we have all of that data for those decisions. In fact, I did kind of point out most recently, and this was not just me, but some of our other fellow environmental enthusiasts here in Edmonds, is that with the update to the stormwater plan, they were bringing that before the public for public hearing, before having the CEPA documentation process complete. And so in that instance, the cart was before the horse. And perhaps it doesn't change the decision making, but we still have to follow that process to make sure that we have all of that data and all of that information to make good decisions that can impact our our environment. So yeah, I would definitely be enforcing, making sure CEPA is completely complied with for our local decisions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen, did you have any follow up?
No, I'm good.
Ms. Cass, anything more?
No, thanks.
Okay. Next question, and this will go to Mr. Casper, sorry, Ms. Casper. Boy, I haven't mixed up that before. Ms. Cass first. Describe your experience working collaboratively with other jurisdictions to address regional issues and name one regional project you would like to see the City of Edmonds develop with other jurisdictions.
Oh, that is a really great question. I have definitely worked with a number of agencies from Department of Ecology, recently with, actually, I should say about 10 years ago, with the Seattle Greener Skies Project. I worked with many of the cities. I worked with residents. I planned workshops, worked with the Sierra Club, did outreach with with tribal leaders to get their input. And and that was definitely a regional effort. And I'm happy to say that by working together, we were able to reduce carbon emissions by 22,000 metric tons per year. And that's like equivalent of taking 400 cars off the streets every single year. So that that really adds up. So that's probably a really good example. I would say regionally, we need to be working together on on our homeless issue. And that's because a lot of people who are homeless, they're traveling between cities and between counties. And so a lot of the nonprofits, they're able to work outside the boundaries and help people and find the facilities that they they need, whether it's within our county or outside of our county. So I think this is something that definitely needs to be regionally approached, and we need to work together with our sister cities.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen?
Thank you, Teresa. When it comes to collaboration with surrounding jurisdictions, that's what I did all my life. I have lived and worked in multiple jurisdictions. And I have built strong relationships through my volunteers, through nonprofits. And during this campaign, during the course of the campaign, I have reached out to our county executive, Deff Summers, our neighboring cities, Mayor Jenny Franklin, Jenny Gregersons from Marco Teo, Casey Franklin from Everett, and Gil Cole Wright from Marley Terrace. I have reached out to different council members as well and and talked to them, discussed issues, and they have come to admire and respect my ability to walk across the borderline, and they have all come out to endorse me. One issue that we need to work with our regional is homelessness and also transportation. I think those are the two, the two issues that we need regional efforts to combat these issues, especially on the homelessness. People, those people who who needed, who are unhoused, they could be traveling from one jurisdiction to another. We need to work with them to perhaps pull a regional resource fund and then have each cities participate into this fund, not only financially, but also in terms of HR to to make a regional effort to address this issue.
Thank you. Ms. Cass, did you have more? Good. Mr. Chen, anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next question, and this one will go to Mr. Chen. During the past year, we have learned more about negative experiences of BIPOC residents living in Edmonds. What is the role of the city council in addressing racism and the effects of white supremacy in our city?
Teresa, thank you for asking these questions. You know, as a minority myself and as a fourth generation immigrant, when I come to this city, City of Edmonds, I felt loved and welcomed with open arms. I opened my CPA firms right here in Edmonds. I went to Edmonds Chamber of Commerce. Greg and Erica and Alicia, they all opened their arms, welcomed me, give me a job right away, make me ambassador. So I was able to go out to make phone calls to local business, make connections. So I felt loved in this community. That said, racism and white supremacies do exist. My own mother-in-law, during year 2020, when the coronavirus first broke, she was walking from her house on 76th Avenue to my house on 75th Avenue. And somebody told her to go home, to go back to her own country. In fact, she has lived in the United States, has been a citizen for 53 years. And she's a tough nut. She said, you go back to your own country. So I mean, we, as a community, as a society, we need to just realize that all of us, except the indigenous people, we are all immigrants at one point, whether you are coming from Europe, Asia, or any other continent, we are all immigrants. We need to work together. And that's what makes this country so beautiful and so strong.
Thank you. Ms. Cass?
Thanks, Teresa. So I definitely think there is no place for racism in in Edmonds. And you might not know this to see me, but my grandmother is Japanese, African-American, and Hawaiian. And she grew up in a time, even my own grandfather would say very negative racist things to her. And his entire family was very demeaning to her. But you know, she served as a role model to me because she was educated. She worked, she managed some of the first computers at the University of Hawaii, and so I'm very impressed with that. And she was a leader in her civics club in Hawaii, to the point where she was able to set up a longstanding exchange between native Alaskans and native Hawaiians. And so that culture and embrace, the fact that she stood tall and embraced her culture and was proud has always been an inspiration to me. And I think we're really blessed here in Edmonds that we are growing in diversity. And even though our school district spans Linwood as well, we are a majority-minority school system. And I see it in in my children and the friends that they have, and then the diversity that they, of their friendships that they embrace. And that that goes for not only cultural diversity, but along with the LGBTQ community as well. And so I'm very proud that that my kids are loving and welcome. I I know that the city has worked really hard. We have our Diversity Commission, and they've been working really hard to to bring forth cultural events, to bring us closer together. And so I'm a big advocate of those. And with Will, we are both on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for our Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen, did you follow up? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say a heartfelt thank you for this community, for welcoming and creating such a wonderful atmosphere for all of us to to live and work and and embraces this beloved community.
Thank you. Ms. Cass, anything else?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. Next question. Ms. Ms. Cass, this will go to you first. If elected, what will be your spending priorities in the next budget?
Why, thank you. So I think we definitely have to be focused on the fundamentals, you know, streets and safety. And I think I'm really happy to hear that in 2022, that Highway 99 projects are going to see two phases, including the median strip and crosswalks being improved for safety. And adding to to that, it's just going to be safer and better for all of us. And I think that's going to be something, we're going to keep our eyes to that. I know that we spent a lot of money on civic field. I think we need to make sure that we're budgeting for other green spaces for our neighbors throughout all of Edmonds. And so that that's another priority for me. And then one of the things I'd like to see us accomplish that shouldn't even cost us anything but may have a huge impact on public safety, and that would be that we put together a resolution, like many of the cities in our county, requesting that Governor Inslee and the state legislature meet to go over some of the recent changes in policing, because there's ambiguities and confusion. And basically, they're handcuffing our our good Edmonds Police Department from being able to do their job, whether it's pursuing criminals or helping people in in a mental health crisis. So I think we should do that. It's going to have a big impact on on local public safety, and it's not even going to cost us anything.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen?
Thank you, Teresa. Yeah, the top priority, as I stated all along, is public safety. We need to ensure that our police, our fire, and other first responders have the adequate resources and tools that they needed so that they can protect our life, our freedom. And they go with, recently, our audit report to the police department pointed out that we will need to make a few improvements within the departments, including more actively recruiting female police officers. Sorry, let me drink drink some water.
Always.
Police officers and and we need to make sure that this is follow up. So I also am very pleased that our city's administration putting more emphasis on Highway 99 area. The area has been overlooked for too long. We need to, I was very pleased that this this year, this uptown market is happening and the investment that's coming, that that will bring some balance. And of course, it's a tremendous opportunity for us to add in some reasonable and strategic certification so that we can, in turn, protect our single-family zoning elsewhere. So this is, this is a tremendous opportunity. And when I'm on the council, I am the perfect person to bridge the multicultural backgrounds that's needed representations on the council.
Thank you. Ms. Cass, any response?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Anything more, Mr. Chen? Good?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to add that as we move forward, City of Edmonds is such a culturally diverse community. We have many languages were spoken at home, and many of them scattered around the city, but more concentrated along Highway 99. So I want to use my expertise and knowledge and my connections, my bilingual skills, my broad reach into this community. And I want to have a multicultural center along Highway 99 where we can bring the rich cultural diversity celebrations under in one place. So so I just want to add that. That's my my wish, and I want to see that too.
Thank you. Believe it or not, we're almost finished. Here's the next question. Mr. Chen, this goes to you first. Other cities provide direct financial support to their chambers of commerce for the work they do, ranging from contracts for marketing and business support to waiting permits for park use for chamber events. How will you work to support the Edmonds Chamber of Commerce?
Chamber of Commerce is such an important community organizer for our city. I am honored and privileged to serve on the Chamber Ball. And during this pandemic, our chamber really needed help. And I was very honored to be on the chamber's task force that helped raise over $107,000 to help the Chamber overcome this difficult time. And in fact, that's true. Our city need to support our chamber because our chamber is doing a lot of work for our city. So when I'm on the council, I'm totally wanting to work with the rest of the council members and our our city, our citizens, to come up ways that we can support our chamber so that they can continue to be a strong advocate and bring all these wonderful services, like the Fourth of July, like the castle, and many, many other activities that enriches our city's experience.
Thank you. Ms. Cass?
Well, like Will, I've been on the Chamber Board of Directors, actually, probably one one extra year compared to him. But we're both But we're both really big fans of the work that they do. And Edmonds just wouldn't be Edmonds and the activities and the small-town charm, you know, things that we're we're partaking in, whether it's the fireworks or the tree lighting or the car show, which is very popular. You know, Edmonds would just not be the same without those events. And so I do think that the city needs to partnership and understand the value that they're getting. And um and so be on even just those activities. They're just a wonderful resource for all of our small businesses. Um. So you know, there's there's some probably limitations that city council can really do. But I know that giving some grace on on rent has been a huge deal during the pandemic when income was low. And there have been some situations where there have been some services that they could contract to. So I'd I would still encourage that. Um. And then, you know, just being able to work with them when it comes time for, you know, paying the required overtime for like the Fourth of July parade, just make sure that we're, the city is being fair on those negotiations, I think is important. And um keeping them in mind when there's, you know, there's a lot of the the COVID relief funding and grants. And so I'm hoping that in a second go-round that the Chamber of Commerce will be um notified that that's something that they they can qualify for a second time and take part in that because they are such a vital part of Edmonds as we know it.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chen. Go ahead.
Yes, Teresa, you know, as a CPA and a small business owner, I always look at uh a business from a top line and a bottom line. A top line is revenue, a bottom line is profit, in between is the expenses. So I always want to look ways uh for ways to reduce costs. And this, I have an idea that is is wonderful for our entire community, which is, I I mentioned earlier, is the Citizens Patrol Program. If we have a a coordinator in the police department and get this program reactivated, we can save money for this example, this taste of Edmonds. We spend money hiring police officers over time to ensure the security. If we have this Citizens Patrol Program, we can totally save money and have those pride citizens do the work for us.
Thank you. Ms. Cass, anything else?
Um I just want to point out that there has been a community outreach officer hired. So that's already on the docket. And uh we'll look forward to seeing what they can do for the Fourth of July Parade next year.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're on to our final question. And Ms. Cass, this will go to you first. Without engaging in partisan or personal attacks, tell voters why you will be a better city council member than your opponent.
Well, first off, I am supported by Edmonds to work for Edmonds. Eighty-eight point eight percent of my funding comes from the people here in Edmonds. And so my my heart and my obligations and my loyalties all lie with with the people of Edmonds. I have a proven track record of handling very complex projects that involve budgeting and minding minding the bottom line for the taxpayers. That's just above and above and beyond just looking at the financial figures. It also involves taking into account complex data and input and reaching out to concerned citizens and reaching out to other other organizations and stakeholders like the Sierra Club or the Department of Ecology and having direct contact with with tribal leaders to come up with solutions. And in many cases, I've I've come up with very successful solutions by creating teamwork and creating a cohesive group that can look at these things and talk about the facts and talk about the data openly and honestly. In a recent project that we had over Las Vegas, by bringing together all of these people, even though it was an unpopular idea, we were able to reduce flights over the Grand Canyon by up to a hundred per day, which is something that people didn't think could even happen. And furthermore, we were able to reduce all flights over Zion National Park. So these are, I know, national treasures, but that same skill set is what I bring to the Edmund City Council. And I want to apply that and serve the people of Edmonds in the same way. And we have environmental issues, and we've got a lot of infrastructure issues that we that I will apply that same techniques.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen?
Thank you, Teresa. Friends and neighbors, this November, you have a chance to elect a collaborative leader who will work with all residents, all council members, and the mayor. I will ensure your tax dollar will be spent wisely to improve public safety, fiscal transparency, and accountability. I believe in family and community, and I believe in service. Service is in my blood. I believe in equity, and the opportunities are available for everyone. On the other hand, my opponent think that if you can't afford to live here, you don't belong here. Let me tell you, I come to this country in my early twenties with next to nothing and barely limited English skills. And now I'm a successful business owner. As a result, I'm dedicated to extending the opportunity that I have been offered to every members of our community. I ask for your vote on November second. Be in Edmonds kind of hero, because together we will.
Thank you. Did either of you have anything more you wanted to add on before we get to the closing statement? To that last question? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Cass.
I do, I do actually. Um I want to emphasize the fact that, again, I am the only nonpartisan. I did not seek any outside endorsements from partisan influences. And um a lot of the evidence that my opponent has talked about is on is on video. So you can easily go to the Facebook presentations of people seeking endorsement from the Thirty-Second Democratic Legislative District. And so so the evidence is there. Um I also want to point out the fact that I do believe Edmonds is for everyone. And that's why I am resolved to help protect the single-family zones and the the older home stock that is considered the more affordable homes. And I want to tell our, tell our listeners or our watchers today that I come from a long line of service. My father served in the military defending us. I served, and now my daughter is serving in the Air Force.
Thank you. Mr. Chen, anything more?
Uh just for clarification, is this the closing statement already or there's another one?
I think I think that might have been a misunderstanding because that was the final question, but not the closing statement. So if that was your closing statement, it sounded like it could have been. So um. Did you want to, so we have a couple of options here. Did you want to um go back to the final question?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Closing statement? You're fine? Okay, I apologize for the confusion. There was some-
Yeah, I can, I can come up with ten more closing statements. No problem. Yep.
Thank you. There's a lot. I'm throwing a lot at you guys, and you're doing a great job. And I'm sorry. It's it's a lot. So, all right. Uh so we are now moving on to the closing statements. And um, Mr. Chen, you will get to go first on this one since Ms. Cass started with her opening statement. You have a minute, and Janice will let you know when you're getting close to the end. So go ahead.
Thank you, Teresa. I just want to thank the community and the voters for coming out and listen and be a responsible voter. And from the bottom of my heart, I want to say that diversity do matter. Representations do matter. I respect my opponents, her service to our country, uh which we are all indebted to. But we already have a veterans, a very dedicated, good uh veterans on the council. And that the Asian-American communities, which takes up to nearly ten percent of the population, who historically has been underserved. And I am the one that can step up and be the faces of our council that reflect the people who live and work here. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cass?
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for tuning in. Um. Now it's up to you to decide who will best represent and bring real solutions to our city's challenges. When you sit down to vote, ask yourself, do you want a council member determined to restore transparency and accountability who prioritizes the concerns of Edmunds residents rather than the interests of outside money and regional or partisan influences? Do you want a council member determined to protect residential, single-family zoning, Edmunds charm, and bring environmental engineering credentials to the table? Do you want a council member determined to invest in small businesses, our police, our firefighters, as well as Edmunds infrastructure? If you answered yes, and you're ready for leadership with a proven track record of collaboration, teamwork, and win-win solutions, then I ask you to cast your vote for Janelle Cass on November second. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I want to again thank both of you for being here. I put you through a lot of questions and you um rose to the occasion. Thanks again. Um also, thank you again to Janice Carr for doing a fabulous job as timekeeper. It's I did her job for another set of debates we were doing in Linwood, and it is hard. So thank you, Janice. Um also want to thank our sponsors, Edmunds College, James Russell P L C, and Office Tech. And a reminder that the ballots are being in the mail around October fourteenth for the November second election. So please do vote. It does matter. And again, thank you so much to all of you, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.